Hi. Hello, everybody. This is Walter Chuck. I'd like to first to step call this special meeting to order on. Sorry. Friday, November twenty one, twenty twenty five at eight thirty one A M. I'd like to establish a quorum. Commissioner Hall, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Commissioner Miller, are you present?
Yes, present.
Okay, we have established a forum. I would like to ask, because of the serious nature of this meeting and also the serious nature of the helicopter, that we do not need to go into executive session. Do I have consent or a motion to not go into excessive executive session and just discuss this in open meeting?
Vice Chair Chuck, I definitely favor that concept. I would love as much transparency on this as possible, and unless County Council sees some compelling reason to have part of this discussion in executive session, I think a motion would be in order since an executive session was advertised. I would want to formally move at this point that the executive session listed on the meeting announcement be canceled and that our discussion and deliberation and any decision take place in open session.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
Great. Yeah, I'll second that motion.
All right. All those in fit. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion passes. Mr. Lipp, do we need to switch over to teams or should we do we have to continue the meeting on Zoom?
Oh, this is County Council. No, you do not have to go to teams. So you decided to stay in regular session. So that is what we're going to stay on. Teams was just for an executive session.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Mayor Kaplan is here and I don't have to ask to leave the room now. So why don't you come on up? Thank you.
Okay, before I read this resolution, I'd just like to state that the loss or potential loss of the helicopter is of great concern to all members of Lincoln County, myself, when I was with the Port Commission, along with the fishermen's wives, the county, the port, and members of the search and rescue community went to Eugene, just a little bit where I'm at currently, a little over ten years ago, to make sure that the helicopter stayed. And I am very sad that we are back here ten years later to be doing this again. Fishermen's wives have been very instrumental in this, and I we look forward to working with, working on them to make sure the helicopter stays. They were instrumental in making sure that the helicopter came in eighty seven and stayed in two thousand and fifteen. So I'm looking forward to working with them. So I will now read the resolution. And this is the same resolution that was passed over ten years ago.
Commissioner Chuck, could we have Mr. Lipp pull up the resolution?
Thank you. Okay, it is on the screen. Before the Board of Commissioners for Lincoln County, Oregon, in the matter of opposing closure of the United States Coast Guard helicopter air rescue facility at the Newport Municipal Airport, this will be Resolution two, five, two, six, dash, one, one, A, whereas the United States Coast Guard first stationed helicopter in eighty seven, and whereas the decision to bring a helicopter to the central was a result of years of concerted effort by Newport Fisherman's Wives and other community members, working with local, state, and federal elected officials, and whereas the campaign to bring the helicopter to Newport was a result of concern over numerous deaths of commercial fishermen and recreational boaters on the cold and treacherous waters of the Pacific Ocean, and whereas Newport and the Central Coast are the hub of one of the most productive commercial fishing fleets in the world and a very active charter fleet, and whereas the mission statement of the United States Coast Guard is to ensure our national, our nation's maritime safety, security, and stewardship, and whereas the removal of the helicopter rescue air facility at the Newport Municipal Airport imperils the safety of citizens and runs contrary to the United States Coast Guard's mission statement. Now, therefore, we, the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, do hereby call on the United States Coast Guard to reverse this decision and ask for the assistance of all local and federal officials in this task dated this twenty sixth of November, twenty twenty five. And there we have it. Commissioner Miller, do you have any comments regarding the resolution?
Well, I'm glad we're doing this. You know, I think we need to utilize everything possible in our toolset to support our fishing fleet. And, you know, I'm glad we're here today and that this is open so that folks can understand that we have their interest in mind. Mayor Kaplan is here today as well, and we'll just keep marching forward and continuing to, in addition to this, exploring whatever option possible that we can do to ensure the continuity of these services. Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Hall?
Well, Commissioner Chuck, I've got to say I have an overwhelming sense of deja vu at the moment, and in this case, it's not a good thing, as you noted. This is the exact resolution we adopted in two thousand and fourteen, and the county then joined with, I know, the city, the port, other interested parties in this legal action initiated by the fishermen's wives. And I guess my only thought at this point is, we did it before. If we have to do it again, which we which we do, I'm glad we're moving forward once again as with a united front.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. I'm just going to say that I found an old picture on my phone, and I convened a meeting earlier this week with the fishermen's wives, the county, and the port, and I'm glad to see that almost everybody that was in that picture fifteen, ten years ago was on the call. I told them that it was very unfortunate they were having to meet again in for this manner. So I'm very supportive of getting the Coast Guard to fill the helicopter back up here and making sure that the safety of our residents, our commercial and recreational fishing fleet are one of our utmost concerns, and we get that helicopter back. At that, at this time, I will take a motion to approve the resolution.
I would move that we approve the resolution opposing the closure of the United States Coast Guard helicopter air rescue facility at the Newport Municipal Airport.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Do I have a second?
Yes, Commissioner Hall, I second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, I will ask all those in favor to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And the next item of business. I think we need to have a discussion on joining possible litigation put forward to make sure that helicopter stays. I think right now we are actually in a better position than we were last time due to the hard work of everybody involved, especially the fishermen's wives. We were able to get a federal statute passed in two thousand and fifteen. It was further strengthened in two thousand and eighteen. So I would like to know if we'll start with discussion. Commissioner Hall, do you have any thing to say regarding possibly joining this, any possible litigation?
Thank you, Vice Chair Chuck. No, I don't, except to say that I am absolutely favor in favor of us doing this. I mean, whatever we can do on behalf of the people of Lincoln County to secure the return of this life-saving resource is necessary and appropriate.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Miller, do you have any comments or concerns?
I would like for us to potentially consider that we do have executive session in the future to, you know, iron out the details. But, you know, to the degree that we can discuss that publicly, then yeah, let's do that. I think it's of high interest to the community. But yes, I support whatever capacity that we can assist from a legal perspective. Let's do it.
All right, thank you. Kristen, County Council, can you let us know what was the involvement of the county the last time this came up?
So the county was a co-playoff along with the fishermen's wives, the port, and the city. And then there were a few other nonprofit groups. So if you're proposing for the county to join as a potential plaintiff, I would just need a motion indicating that you would support joining in the federal lawsuit, that you would authorize County Council to coordinate the county's participation with the other parties in the lawsuit.
Okay. Thank you for that. I am fully in favor of us joining any possible litigation and authorizing County Council to coordinate our participation. Does someone want to make a motion to that effect?
Vice Chair Chuck, I would be glad to make that motion.
Please proceed.
Okay, I move that the county authorize need whatever is needed in terms of financially supporting and participating in any litigation that may be initiated regarding the status of the Newport search and rescue helicopter.
I'll second that motion.
Hey. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Chuck, could Chair Hall, could you amend your motion just to include that you specifically authorized County Council to coordinate the county's participation?
Yes, I would like to make that that amendment.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
And I do.
Yeah, I'll second that amendment.
Okay, so you're okay with amending the first motion, correct?
Yeah, I think that's a, it's, that's a good amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing.
Commissioner Chuck or and or County Council, when do we anticipate an update? Is it possible we could conceive of an update in executive session or open at this coming Board of Commissioners meeting, or or do you have any, any sense of a timeline?
We get through the motion first, and then I'll give some information.
Okay, so let's, I second the amended motion.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously. County Council, you want to follow up on the question?
So this is potential litigation. Nothing's been filed yet. So the board has disauthorized us to be be able to participate as a party. So if, you know, litigation, we have an outside council that the fisherman wives has secured. It's really the same firm or connected to the same firm that represented the county previously. So filings are public. It will be filed in federal court, and any updates, you know, would be given by the outside council or myself. And we anticipate that most of that would be public because the filings are going to be public.
Okay, yeah, good. I think as much as we can bring into the public dialogue, you know, knowing how much concern and interest there is, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss Ken, can you let me know how many people that we have signed up for public comment?
You have that in your email, Walter.
Okay. And Commissioner Chuck, I just want you to be aware to I have Mayor Kaplan here, and so just I'd like to put him into the queue, please.
Oh, yeah, allow an exception for this one. Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Right, I'm going to my email, getting public speakers. Okay, it looks like we have four people signed up. I will call them in order in which I was giving them. Just remind everybody, public comment is for giving your public comment to the county commission. We will not be answering questions, and everybody has three minutes. Please keep everything civil, and we will start with Carrie Brandonberg. Mr. Lipp, can you let Carrie into the queue?
Ms. Brandon Burke, can, can you try to?
Yes, can you hear me now? Sorry, I couldn't. I'm not familiar with this type of Zoom, so I wasn't sure how to be able to speak.
You should be able to go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Carrie Brandberg. I am the treasurer of Newport Fisherman's Wives. I have been a member of Newport Fisherman's Wives since the previous fight for the helicopter in two thousand and fourteen. I want to thank the county for your support and for helping us move forward with what we may need to do legally to be able to keep this helicopter for not just our commercial fishermen, but all of our county members and visitors that come here. As we know, our cold waters off of Oregon are very different than other places in the country, and we truly believe that the people sitting at a desk making these decisions do not understand our county, our conditions, and our cold water temperatures. We believe that the helicopter does have an impact on saving lives in assist with our sea crews here. We do want to say we are always in support of the Coast Guard as fishing family, myself, and a second-generation fishing family member and a local business owner. I want to thank the county for standing up to help us as much as you guys have to this point and previously, and we look forward, unfortunately, to having to do this, but at least we are doing this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call Tonette Dixon.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Yeah, I also would like to thank, I first of all, I was born in this county. I have come from a four-generational fishing family. We have, I have been witness to what the helicopter, the rescue helicopter can do in our community. I'm a part of Fisherman's Wives. I was a part of Fisherman's Wives when we had the lawsuit the last time. It was a really difficult fight, and people didn't think that we would gain anything out of the fight, but we certainly did, and we certainly plan on doing that same thing again. I just personally, our boat will be crossing the bar soon to go dungeon-esque crab fishing. It is a very dangerous fisheries, one of the most dangerous fisheries in the world. And we're watching loved ones cross that bar with the, with the the knowing in the past that we've always had that rescue helicopter close when accidents happen, and they do happen. They happen sadly fairly regularly during the crab season. When accidents happen, they have a very limited amount of time in the water. If there is a, if, if, if there is a rescue helicopter that is a half an hour, an hour away, it makes it very difficult for our men and women to survive in the, in the cold waters. Hypothermia sets in very quickly. They, they lose use in their arms, and and after that, it's a, it's a short time of being able to survive. So we, we do this out of a, of course, a passion for our commercial fishermen in this county, but we do this also for all the others that are rescued by that helicopter regularly. You know, we have, we have a large influx of tourists in the summer, and sadly, tourists don't understand our, our oceans and our beaches, and and that helicopter regularly plucks people off cliffs, off rocks, our surfers, you know, all the way to our loggers. Everybody in this county is protected by that. And, and, and further, you know, we look at, at some of the the harbors just north of us, they also have a very difficult time getting a prompt rescue. They depend on our rescue helicopter. So I, I just want to, I want to thank you guys for, for helping us helping us help our community. I, I'm, I'm impressed with how fast you guys have joined in the fight, and I appreciate all that you're doing.
Thank you, Tonette. We appreciate it. Next up, we have Gary Ripka.
Can you hear me now?
Mr. Rip.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I'm not liking that. I'm not familiar with this Zoom process. I'm Gary Ripka, the commercial fisherman owner of the Tabitha and the Genoa. Also, I am the president of the Newport Marketing Association. I represent approximately eighty-five vessels fishing out of our town, and their families and crews. And most of these vessels have, you know, upwards of five, you know, three to five crew members onboard that also have families that also depend on this helicopter. I'm very impressed with you guys, what you guys are stepping up here. And, and this is all hands on deck, community members. We, we desperately need to try to get this helicopter back. My personally, about ten years ago, I had a crew member that had extreme chest pains. We had to have a Coast Guard medevac. We wouldn't have made it in time, and a boat wouldn't have made it in time probably for this, this person. It could have been a very different outcome if we had not had that helicopter out of Newport. Cus Bay is just too far away. I also have a very close friend of mine that is also captain of the Genoa that was running a vessel named the Chevelle that I think you maybe all be aware of. Their vessel ended up on the North Jetty, and they, right before dark, by the time the helicopter got there, which was in Newport at the time, rescued them, it was dark, and they were on the jetty, and they plucked them off the bow of that vessel. I personally was on the ground, I'm standing on the South Jetty parking lot when he stepped off the helicopter and gave him a hug, my friend. He was captain of the Chevelle. Very emotional time. Could have been way, way different if we had not had that helicopter sitting right in Newport. That vessel was breaking up at rapid rate. I don't know if any of you remember, but my morning, that vessel was torn in half. These are real things. These aren't made up stuff. This is stuff that we deal with every season, potentially. And I, I just want to thank you, and, and like I say, we need all hands on deck to get this helicopter back. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next up, we have Justin Warner.
Sure, I don't see him in the participant.
Okay, he's signed up. Just give one more call, Justin Warner, if you're, if you're here. Do you see him as a participant, Ken?
I do not.
Okay. Mayor Kaplan, you know, we're gonna make, I'm gonna make an exception just because you're there in person. And we will, since you will hopefully be joining in in our litigation.
Yeah, yeah, he's right here, Commissioner Chuck. What is the exception?
That this might be wanting to tell us something that regarding possible litigation and joining in on it, and
Oh, I think he's just providing input. Come on over here.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I thought Steph had signed me up to, for, to be in the queue, but I appreciate your, your allowing me to speak. I'm Jan Kaplan, the mayor of the City of Newport, live at thirty-five Northwest High Street in Newport. I had a, I prepared some remarks, and I've, I've given Commissioner Miller a copy of that. Most of what I'm prepared to speak about, you've already covered, is the history of this and what's going on. So I want to cut, you know, to the chase here. One, the city of Newport is in full support of the fishermen's wives and the need to get that helicopter back, and we'll do everything in our power to work together to do that. Second, in, 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 different than twenty, ten, ten years ago, we have an additional issue here, which is the sighting of a ICE prison or detention center. And that particularly affected the our city because of the, the desire to initially to lease land from us. And second, lease land or there, we know that they are still pursuing land. That would put a burden on our land use, on our various regulations and requirements and infrastructure that we need to be prepared to have good legal counsel to make sure that we are covering things correctly. There are also statutory issues, as mentioned, I believe, that in the statutes that were adopted ten years ago, there's a requirement that the Coast Guard notify us when they're going to do something like this ahead of time and conduct some kind of reviews. And to date, three weeks after we've discovered what they were doing, they still haven't done anything. So we, we are going to need legal representation to attack that. The scale of this facility is huge, based on, on their, their pursuing septic removal of five to ten thousand gallons of, of human waste either a day or a week. That, that, that would amount to a facility of at least three hundred to six hundred prisoners. That's a lot of, that's a lot of burden on this community. Want to also echo that the helicopter issue, it, it affects Newport, it affects from Yahats to Tillamook, and probably beyond that. So we're not alone, and we've, as a city, I've been reaching out to other cities. Spoke to the Toledo City Council on Tuesday. They're considering a declaration of support. Have spoken with Depot Bay, Lincoln City, and other, we've also received messages from Benton County, Philomath, and Cobalas. So we're going to be reaching out as far as we can because this affects the whole area. And so essentially, what I'm asking for is, is, is what you're doing is that we need to join together. We need to collaborate. There, there, the city, as a city, we've engaged in a, a, a outside council as well. There, there, the city, as a city, we've engaged in a, a, a outside council as well. And figuring out how that all works together because we are working together, we're, we're greater than the sum of our parts. And I know, Commissioner Chuck, you've been working with, with, with some of our staff and it's hard to say this is exactly what we're going to do, but we know we need to work together. I've begun to, to look to how we raise funds because this could come to a lot of money.
We're coming, we're coming up on three, three minutes, sir mayor.
Okay, I think that's, that's, I've said what I want to say. I want to thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to work together with our cities, with our port, with the fishermen's wives. And the communication is open and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, seeing no the end of public comment, I'm going to adjourn the meeting at nine oh one on November twenty-one, twenty twenty-five. Thank you all for attending. Looking forward to hopefully come, getting this, this thing resolved to get the helicopter back. And the safety of our community and everybody involved is utmost importance. So thank you and have a good day. Adjourned the meeting.